It's it's on the speaker. Testing, testing. Appears to be working. Test. It goes. All right, can folks online hear me okay? I see a Tyler Warner with IDL. Can you just confirm that the audio is working? Okay, got a thumbs up. All right, this is the time and place for the evidentiary public hearing before the Idaho State Board of Land Commissioners in the matter of the encroachment permit application number. L nine six S zero eight eight four G Long Bridge Holding Company LLC as applicants. Agency case number P H dash twenty twenty four dash N A V dash twenty dash zero zero three Office of Administrative Hearings case number twenty four dash three twenty dash ten. Signed Hearing Officer Leslie Hayes. Present for the Department of Lands, we have Mr. John Richards present for the applicant. We have Mr. John Finney and present representing objectors Idaho Transportation Department. We have Mr. Gary Luke. Prior to the start of these proceedings, the parties stipulated to the admission of all offered exhibits, which includes I T D exhibits one through four. Idaho Department of Lands exhibits one through twenty nine with thirteen, twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three reserved. And Long Bridge Marina exhibits one through three offered prior and then an exhibit four offered today. I didn't confirm if there was any objection to the. Offered exhibit four from earlier today, Mr. Richards.
Although.
Okay, Mr. Luke.
I don't.
It was today. And while Mr. Luke is reviewing that exhibit, I will clarify that public comment on this project will close at five P M tomorrow, March seventh. I'm going to be offering fourteen days for written closings, making that deadline March twenty first. The record will close March twenty first. And then the director's final order will be due thirty days after March twenty first. Which means my recommended order is sometime. Before that thirty day mark. And then tomorrow, the parties will be visiting the site of the proposed project for an onsite inspection. Different times were thrown around, but does nine A M work for you?
Yes.
Mr. Luke, nine A M work for you?
Yeah.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Okay, so nine A M will be doing an onsite inspection that will also be part of the record and loaded up onto. The website. The order of proceedings this evening is going to be Mr. Richards through the Department of Lands will present the regulatory standards that apply to this application. Mr. Finney will then have an opportunity to answer any questions raised by that regulatory concept. Or that were raised in the pre-hearing statement and present the application to the audience. And then Mr. Luke will be able to present on behalf of objectors. Thus far, we have no members of the public desiring to comment. If that changes, we will open it up to public comment. If not, then it will turn back to Mr. Finney for any response or Mr. Richards for any points that he would like to identify. So with that, Mr. Richards, the floor is yours for an opening or whether you would. Desire to call a witness.
Oh, thank you, Ben. Deadline book statements. And perhaps I just did you set a deadline to close the public.
Of five o'clock tomorrow.
Oh. And to start, Idaho Department of Lands like to call Mike Amor. But I said. On what position on the sound.
Mr. Raymond, please raise your right hand to be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is truthful, truth, nothing but the truth? You may proceed.
Is there a audio visual or is there a audio part of this being closed on Zoom?
On on Zoom, it's being recorded and then I have a secondary recording on my iPad.
So I've got a comment from our employees that there's nothing to see on the screen.
Oh, you mean visual?
Yeah.
Oh, no, there's nothing.
Nothing at all. Okay. Okay, my name is Mike Amor. We're for Idaho Department of Lands. I'm going to read a truncated version of our hearing statement. It's already part of the record. It's already been submitted for the record for so for sake of time. I I will just skip past the legal provisions. That were reviewed and kind of just jump right into our conclusion section of the statement. Our analysis of compliance with the L P A and rules. Latoral ownership, the applicant is a latoral owner and owns one parcel adjacent to the Pondre River identified as Bonner County Parcel. R P zero zero two, three, four, zero, one, zero, zero, two, B, zero, A. With a common address of thirty one Lake Shore Drive, Sagal, Idaho. The parcel appears to be a waterfront parcel with latoral rights. There are no other parcels or roads between the parcel and the artificial high watermark. The applicant is seeking an encroachment permit to enlarge existing commercial marina, which is considered a navigational encroachment. According to the application, the applicant's parcel contains approximately one hundred ninety nine feet of waterfrontage. The proposed commercial marine expansion will extend farther out into the river than the current existing marina. As described above, the line of navigability in Idapa is based on the current length of permitted encroachments in the area. Commercial encroachments typically extend much farther out into the water than a residential dock and often extend beyond line of navigation. However, a long commercial facility typically does not set the line of navigation. This is evident from the fact that the Idapa rules. Allow commercial navigational encroachments and community docks to extend beyond the line of navigation if authorized by I D L to do so. Looking at the existing encroachments, there are single family docks to the west. The site contains an existing commercial marina and there's a highway bridge to the east. The existing commercial marina and bridge do not govern the line of navigability. And the location of the line of navigability is determined by the length of the single family docks to the west. Given the nature of the area and the existing encroachment. It appears that the proposed encroachment would extend beyond line of navigability. The proposed marine expansion extends out into the river approximately six hundred and fifty five feet according to the drawings. Although there is a page in the application that appears to show the marina extends out six hundred and thirty nine feet. The six hundred and fifty five foot measurement was based on calculations from the detailed marina drawings as part of the application. The applicant should clarify at the hearing the accurate length of the proposed commercial marina. Idapa provides a rebuttal of presumption that commercial navigational encroachments will have a like adverse effect upon adjacent latoral rights if located closer than twenty five feet. To adjacent latoral right lines. Based on the application, the commercial marina will provide a twenty five foot buffer to the western latoral right lines. And a twenty five foot buffer to the eastern latoral right lines. It should be noted that the eastern latoral right line is unique. The Highway ninety five Long Bridge provides an empty space between privately owned parcels with shared property corners. Typically, I D L uses the chord method in determining latoral right lines. Wherein you create chords between points. Where the property lines intersect with the artificial or ordinary high watermark. Once the chords are created, an angle is created. And then the latoral line extends out into the water by secting that angle. The latoral right line extends out to the line of navigability to define a latoral owner's latoral right area. I D L created a latoral line based on the chord method and using the parcel on the east side of the highway. And determined that it would extend out into the water flaring towards the Long Bridge. Idaho courts have recognized that given the endless variability and irregularity in shorelines. There is no hard and fast rule for determining latoral lines that is applicable in all cases. Ultimately, the controlling thought in every case is to treat each case in an equitable manner. So that so far as possible, all property owners on a body of water have access to the water. It is I D L's determination that based on the unique aspects of the shoreline and the presence of the Long Bridge. The applicant's eastern latoral line extends waterwork parallel with the Long Bridge as depicted in the application. Based on this latoral line and the diagrams in the application, it appears that the broad proposed project will maintain a twenty five foot buffer. From the latoral lines and the presumption of adverse effect does not arise. At this time, there does not appear to be other evidence in the record that the proposed project would adversely affect latoral rights. Signature requirement. Idapa says that only a person. Is who's the latoral owner or less he is eligible to apply for an encroachment permit application. In this matter, the applicant is the latoral owner of the parcels in question. And as I said earlier, there are no other parcels between the subject parcel and the river. This application only contains one component, the expansion and extension of the existing commercial marina. The applicant is not proposing any other encroachments through this application. Applications for commercial marinas must satisfy the specific requirements of Idapa twenty point oh three, point oh four, point one, five, point zero three. Based on the application materials, it appears the applicant is proposing to install a commercial marina containing a total of two hundred and seventy slips. With an overall footprint. Being four hundred and sixty feet wide by approximately six hundred and fifty five feet long. The application does not state how many of the overall slips will be available to the general public and how many will be private. Therefore, the application does not contain sufficient information to determine whether it satisfies the fifty to fifty. Ratio of public to private mortgage requirement of Idapa. The applicant ought to provide additional information today to determine whether the requirements are those requirements are satisfied. The proposed marine expansion initially did not appear to satisfy the parking requirements. However, given the document that was submitted today, it appears that the parking permits have been met. According to the application, it appears that all the slips will be of a like kind and quality. Therefore, should there be a mixture of private and public mortgage included in the proposed expansion. The requirements of Idapa would be satisfied as long as they have that fifty to fifty ratio. Idapa requires that commercial marinas with private mortgage must form a condominium association, co-op, or other entity that owns and manages the marina. As stated above, is unclear whether there'll be private mortgage and if there is private mortgage, they would need to satisfy that requirement as well. Now we can not provide that information about private mortgage and if those provisions are satisfied. In some, there is some additional information required to determine whether the proposed encroachment satisfies all their requirements of Idapa. To date, I D L has received comments from I T V, I D E Q, I D F G, and Bonner County. Based on the objection letter from I T D. They have concerns related to the proposed commercial marine expansions close proximity to the Highway ninety five Long Bridge and its associated easement. As well as potential traffic issues on Lake Shore Drive. And pedestrian crossing at Lake Shore Drive to access the marina from the proposed parking lot. It should be noted that I T V also has an existing easement with I D L for the Long Bridge. Idapa does not list any specific setback buffer requirements from easement boundaries or right of way lines. It only mentions latoral lines. The proposed marina appears to provide a twenty five foot buffer to the eastern latoral line that borders the Long Bridge. However, it does appear that the proposed marina may be within the easement boundaries. And it appears that it does not provide a buffer for the right of way for the Long Bridge. The scope of potential impacts to I D T's easement are not in clear entirely clear in I D T's letter. It may be beneficial to obtain additional information from I T D. And the applicant to determine what the full scope of potential impacts may be. It also appears that the proposed marina will cross over another existing easement or internet cable that crosses the Pondre River. I D L does not have regulatory jurisdiction over upland issues such as increased traffic, pedestrian crossings, and parking lots. I D L's regulatory authority is limited only to those areas specifically identified in the Lake Protection Act. The L P A grants I D L the authority to regulate, control, and permit encroachments and aid to navigation or not an aid to navigation. On, in, or above the beds of waters and natural lakes. This grants I D L the authority to regulate encroachments below either the ordinary or artificial high watermarks, but not above. However, I D L recognizes the difficult position that the approval of the proposed marina would place on I T D. Significant work has already taken place to alleviate traffic concerns at Lake Shore Drive and Highway ninety five. And there's currently funding in place for future studies on more work to alleviate traffic concerns, increase safety. Along with plans to expand Highway ninety five and the Long Bridge. The approval of the proposed marina can result in I T D having to spend even more money and resources to deal with traffic. And safety issues at the Lake Shore Drive and Highway ninety five intersection. As stated above, I D L does not have jurisdiction over upland issues. Such as traffic and pedestrians. However, if there are other federal, state, or local laws applicable to upland portions. Or impacts of the application, the applicant will still be required to comply with those requirements. An encroachment permit from I D L does not excuse an applicant from obtaining additional necessary approvals lawfully required or from complying with other laws. I D L also received comment letters from I D E Q and I D F G regarding the application. I D E Q stated concerns with construction debris management and also riprap and excavation. The riprap drawings in the application were from a previously issued I D L encroachment permit. I D L requires that all encroachments be shown on drawings with the application. Since the most current permit supersedes and voids previous permits. Therefore, the riprap drawings from the previous permit are incorporated in a new permit that is issued. To reflect work that has already been performed. There will not be any new excavation or riprap work as part of this application. However, I D L agrees with concerns raised by I D E Q about construction debris management. If a permit is issued, it will require that the applicant effectively manage demolition and construction debris. In an effective manner dispose of any waste in an improved upland location. I D F G raised concerns about how docks provide habitat for predatory fish. That eat native salmonoids that travel in the river channel near the proposed marina. And that the proposed marina is very large in size. I D F G did not offer any mitigation measures to limit the impact. Did not provide any any information on how large a proposed marina could be to avoid negative impact to native fish. Nor did they state the project should not be approved. I D F G did submit a letter saying the proposed marina could have a negative impact on native fisheries. However, the proposed marina will also provide a public benefit through a significant increase in boat slip availability offered to the public. The impacts outlined above that fall within I D L's jurisdiction ought to be considered when making the final determination. On whether the benefits of the proposed expansion exceed the detriments. Given the reasons described above, the application satisfies the encroachment standards applicable to the expansion. Except for the additional information required. Additional information regarding the potential impacts I T D's easement rights may also be helpful determining the full scope of impacts of the proposed project. Because the red record for this matter remains open, the full impacts of this application may have not been fully determined. And additional information may be forthcoming. I D L respectfully reserves the rights to supplement, clarify, or modify its statements based on the availability of new information. That concludes the prepared statement. Miss hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. We don't have any good questions.
Um, I heard you say, I just want to verify that the updated. Long Bridge Exhibit Four with the new parking map does alleviate the concerns that I D L or questions I D L had about. Sufficiency of parking.
I believe it does.
Uh, I think we will require some additional testimony preceding the exhibit, but haven't received any information on how it would be implemented or how it's intended to modify. The application, but uh. It's assuming that the applicant provides that information.
So I might I'll come back to my question and mystery.
Okay.
No further questions. Questions for this witness?
No.
Okay. Mr. Richards, any additional witnesses to call?
No, this will listen.
All right, Mr. Finney, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this for opening. Will be Lance Lane, the contractor. Project. To address the identified concerns as well as describe the additional Long Bridge before exhibit. And then we may call Justin from the. Engineering firm. He'd be too dressed. So first I call Lance Lane.
All right, Mr. Lee, can you break some ready for me? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is truthful, truth, and nothing but the truth? Floor is yours, and Mr. Finney?
Thank you. Mr. Lane, how are you employed or business to operate?
Self-employed, my own length of marine. For the marine.
And did you do the work on the prior expansion?
Yes.
And so you're familiar with the site from that work as well as prepared for this application?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to review the? Length of the extent of the.
Yes, it's six hundred and thirty nine feet.
And so the correct distance measured is six hundred and thirty feet.
Yep.
And there's a question as to whether this is public or private mortgage or form the hearing officer and I D L as to the nature of the bunch.
Yeah, all mortgages for public. There would be any private.
And based upon the public mortgage. There was a prior existing diagram submitted for parking, is that correct? And there's been an updated. Diagram which has now been marked as L B M dash four. That's been provided and I'm gonna hand that to you. Have you had a chance to review that?
Oh, yeah, briefly this morning I did.
And. You've reviewed, but. Were you aware that the North Arrow on prior diagrams with the application went in the wrong direction?
I was not aware.
Yes, but if you look at the North diagram, yeah, the arrow on Exhibit Four. Does that provide the correct course of direction? It's okay. And then in addition to the north. The change on the parking diagram is to rather than having designated full tandem slips to provide, excuse me, tandem spaces. To provide for single spaces which can be utilized either by tandem or by. Single vehicles, is that correct?
Correct.
And is there any boat ramp included in this existing encroachment or the proposed encroachment?
No, there's no boat ramp at all.
And so is there any anticipation that boat trailers or those types of trailers would actually be parked?
No, it's like day use parking for the day use.
And based upon the updated diagram, that also includes a table for the total number of spaces, is that correct?
Yes.
And so what's the total number of spaces?
A hundred and fifty six.
And based on your review and understanding experience that meets the department's regulatory requirements?
Yes.
As it relates to the question. I guess this point I'll move to mid exhibit before.
Okay, before Long Bridge Marina's Exhibit Four is admitted without objection.
As it relates to the internet cable that we've heard, are you familiar with the existence of that internet cable?
Yeah.
And was that something that had to be dealt with during the prior expansion?
It was. It cuts through there. It's visible. It's on top of the surface.
And so how is that addressed during the construction process?
Uh, we can see it from top. We also dive down. To there, but so before anything put around. Or before any suspension drops. We locate it.
Okay, and as far as you're aware, there's no easement upon the Long Bridge Marina submerged properties, is that correct?
Correct.
And so this will be dealing out with the state owned bed beyond the submerged part of it. And that is, that method worked satisfactorily. Was that method used in conjunction with? The internet cable owner or just that's the way you implemented it?
That's the way we implemented it. When we got out there, we saw that the cable. There's an excessive amount of spool and then it's pulled pulled out through there through the lake bed. On the end of that, the current. Footprint of that lake, but it's pretty much seeing elevation crossed and so. Um, it's not. Unfeasible to see it to further out and build.
And you helped here the preparation of the application?
Yes.
And so shifting to the I T D right of way, as you're saying that the ply four marine encroachment is not within the bounds of the right of way?
Um, if you repeat that again, sorry.
Uh, do you do you know where in relation to the imposed dock encroachments are in relation to the I T D right?
The setback, to my understanding, rather than this setback for it.
And just. To address the waste management comment by I D E Q, your company be the one handling the waste management?
Correct.
And you're familiar with proper disposal and treatment of handling those materials?
Yeah, our process, most of our process is done offsite. So very minimal cutting or is it done onsite?
Maybe you aren't familiar with those disposal requirements.
Yep.
Understand how to comply with them. No other questions for this?
Okay. Mr. Richards.
Mr. Lane, you said that you assisted in preparing the original applications, is that correct?
Yeah.
And did you help prepare the original parking plan that was submitted to the original application?
I did not on that one though.
Okay. Are you familiar with the original parking plan in the original application?
Uh, somewhat, the um. We did it. We did the very original one for the marina. And then the the next one that included for the. Because the parcel was split, that next parking parcel, we didn't, we didn't design that, so. Not real familiar off the top of my head.
And you mentioned that you were familiar also with the uh. The Long Bridge, you did the number four that was entered just recently, that was the new parking.
Yeah.
Okay, and so is your understanding? If I approach. The witness to show in part of the exhibit. But the original application?
Yes, mate.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Lane, I'm going to show you. Yes, I will. I'm going to show you what is part of I D L's exhibit number two, page fourteen. That is labeled I D L two dash zero one four, which is the original parking plan that was submitted with the original application. Is your understanding that the new application that is longer to be exhibit four is intended to replace this parking plan?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Lane, you had also mentioned that on you worked on the prior expansion, correct?
Correct.
And on the prior expansion, you had negotiated the expansion around the existing internet, right? Um, do you foresee there being any issues with navigating around the internet cable with the scope of the proposed expansion in this?
No.
And how you propose giving the significant increase in uh. In the number of slips and overall footprint of the marina. How do you propose to navigate around the internet cable?
We can dive down and mark it with buoys. On the surface, we can see where that route goes. Or and then when we are putting a piling placement that's close to that, you'd have a diver down there.
And the diver would be what would be?
To make sure it's the piling's being placed, it's not being placed on top of the cable or anywhere near to damage it.
And you talked a little bit about the relation to of the proposed expansion to the I T D easement for the Long Bridge. Do you call that part of the testimony?
Hmm.
And is it your understanding that there will be no physical encroachment in I T D's area? As part of this proposed expansion?
Correct, I I had seen. While ago from I D I D L. A a diagram. But it wasn't of a formal document. And when there was a discussion about that, but I can't, I can't clearly tell you on that one.
And are you familiar at all with how a how boat traffic may flow in and out of this proposed marina?
Yeah.
And do you anticipate that that boat traffic will enter into the I T D area?
Um. Well, anytime that boat traffic's going underneath the Long Bridge, it's entering into that easement area. So.
And I'm referencing specifically in the area when which the that would be adjacent to the proposed expansion.
So. I mean, if they're they're coming in onto the eastern side of Marina, they're going to be traveling over easement portion is what I'm assuming you're asking.
Okay, so the boat traffic likely will enter into the easement area or ring the bases.
Yeah, that easement area will be next to the bridge over the water there. That's where boats go a lot of the time through there.
And with the proposed expansion and the configuration of the marina. At the time that any boats are moved, would there be any boats encroaching? uh, at the time that any boats are moved, would there be any boats, um, encroaching within the easement area?
Um, I don't believe so, to step back then.
Uh, you had also mentioned that there is no boat ramp, um, as part of this expansion or as part of the existing, um, Marina, correct?
Correct.
Do you have to know where the closest boat ramp is for, to this, uh, to the Marina?
Closest boat ramp probably be, um, Lake or, uh, Springy Point, down Lake Shore Drive.
And you know approximately how far that is, uh, from the?
Two miles, three miles? The other one will be across, across the Long Bridge at City Beach.
Okay, no further questions.
Right. Mr. Luke, do you have questions for this witness? I just have one before you. So you said that there's no boat ramp and it'll be day use only, so do you know if the, it's anticipated that the boats will be morgue there on public contract subject to renewal because otherwise if you don't have a boat to go to, how are you going to use the parking lot to access it for day use? Does that make sense?
Yeah, um, generally it's the local community that's parking there to, you said, oh, we're gonna launch a long time before the season.
Okay, so it'll be a morgue boat that's
Exactly.
not permanently housed there, but housed there for a period of time?
Yeah, it's a.
Okay. And then my only other question is related to this, this IDO exhibit eleven, at the last page, goes the right of way, ITD's right of way on this line. On this dock right here at the end, closest to land is, uh, is there room for boats to park on the other side of it is, or is it only internal morgue spots?
It's only internal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are the only questions I had.
Sure. Good. Well, small, all of clarification, your day use comment was that people would be driving their cars, parking for the day and using their boats, is that correct? Not that the boats were day use.
Yeah, exactly, correct.
Okay, so the boats would be there on a contract that's available to the public?
Correct.
And then as far as other boat ramps in area, in addition to Springy Point and City Beach, is there also Memorial Field directly across from?
Memorial Field, it's a little farther than City Beach is.
But it's, you don't have to cross under the High Ridge Bridge to be used Memorial Field.
Exactly.
And the, based on your experience, the county has a no wait zone from both, that applies to both the shoreline as well as encroachments such as the Long Bridge and this Marina that's proposed.
Correct.
And so boat traffic in, within the easement would be at a no wait zones being threatened. And that's just like any, any boat user that may be going under or down.
Correct. They'd have to be two hundred feet off of Marina.
And also that applies to shoreline handling. And where we're reaching between dock, which is further away. No further clarifying questions.
Okay, Mr. Richards.
No additional questions.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Called Justin Shaw.
Mr. Shaw, I have your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that is testimony that you're about to provide us the truthful, truthful, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Would you please state your employment?
Uh, HMH Engineering.
And what is HMH's role in regards to this application?
Uh, we've been working with Ben on this to provide exhibits, started originally helping do zone shoreline, uh, rip wrap to start the project, a little bit of survey and construction administration, and then helped lay out the parking lot.
And in regards to the docks themselves, excuse me, and the diagrams that have been submitted that have HMH logo on them?
Yes.
Uh, you've been involved in those preparations?
Yes, yes, we have.
And, uh, are you also familiar as to whether or not there's any staking, um, on the property in relation to where the applicant's property is and the highway right of way?
I believe so. I'm pretty sure we went out there, surveyed it. I think there's some ITD markers along the way, if I remember correctly. But I, I'm almost positive that there are property lines staked out there.
Okay, and was that information taken into account in the preparation of the exhibits?
Yes, yes, it was.
And, uh, the exhibits were prepared with the, uh, intent and or direction to illustrate the physical docks not being located within the uh, highway right of ways, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And if there is some overlap, uh, perceived in the diagrams, the actual construction is intended to not be within the highway right of ways.
Yeah, the whole plan was to keep everything outside of right of way. Uh, if I remember correctly, I think the Long Bridge has a hundred foot easement on each side, I sit in mind. So the idea was to have all of that.
Or do you recall whether it's whether it's set at a highway road or a hundred and fifty feet, so?
These are great questions.
You don't recall it?
I do not recall. I remember we looked at it. I don't recall off the top of my head, but I, I'm pretty sure I got an email or had discussions with ITD about the, um, offset of the easement and I, I don't recall it off the top of my head.
But regardless of the offset, you are familiar with the monumentation and where that shows?
Yes.
And, um, just to confirm, you heard the discussion about the updated parking diagram, which has been marked as Long Bridge is exhibit number four with the one hundred and fifty six total parking spaces?
Yes.
And did you assist in the preparation of that document?
I did.
And just to confirm that, um, document is as been described so far, it is, replaces the prior diagram and provides four spots to be water county as well as IDL's parking.
Yeah, so you guys may have heard, we had the North Arrow going the wrong direction. Um, we also went through and had discussions with Jason Johnson at the county just to make sure we're reading the tandem versus single stall correctly. And so that update reflects that where, um, tandem spots can count as two singles as long as you're like nose to nose on the spots. And so that was the update based on our discussions with the county.
No other questions for this one?
Any questions, Mr. Richards?
Oh, no questions, thanks.
No additional questions.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to recall Mr. Amer to ask him the questions that he wanted to see the presentation. Applicants' testimony, Mr. Amer, you're still under oath?
Yes.
So with that, does the updated parking and exhibit of Long Bridge Marina exhibit number four satisfy IDL's questions about sufficiency of parking?
I believe it does. I counted the, the spaces and it appears that it would be sufficient for three hundred and twelve slips that ever posted through two hundred and seventy. Also, the IDAPA ruling states that if local county or city ordinances have not been adopted, then IDL is supposed to adopt the parking. Well, Bonner County does have a parking ordinance. And it sounds like from Mr. Shaw that they worked with the county on that as well.
Did the clarifying points that these are all public morgue slips satisfy the regulations for IDL?
I believe it did.
Okay, and then did the clarification from Mr. Lane on the length of the encroachment being three hundred and sixty?
Six thirty nine versus six fifty five. I apologize. I just did, I did the math. I I was certain when I did the math earlier, it was six fifty five. And I just did it again and I came up with a six thirty nine. I must have user error before.
Okay.
No, that was my fault. I'm not, I apologize.
All right, I don't, those were the questions I had. Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Luke? All right, seeing them. Mr. Luke, um, I will turn it over to you to present the position of Deckers.
Thank you. You're going to call Rob, please.
Okay, Mr. Bleacher. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that is testimony about to divide isn't too close?
If you can speak with most of the microphone, you can pick it up. Thank you.
This one?
No, no, you'll, you'll be good with it. Please talk over here, the interviewer.
Rob, you've been employed by the Idaho Transportation Department, sometimes, is that correct?
Ten years.
Ten years, very good. And as part of your job with ITD, you've looked at the Long Beach Marina expansion issues and, and, and concerns that ITD might have?
Yes, sir.
And were you involved in preparing, um, responses and objections both to IDL and to the hearing officer in this matter?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you. I'm gonna sit down. I'm gonna have you go through, uh, the, the issues that you have raised and identified, uh, if, if you will.
Sir. In Rockville Beach Farm, I'm a co-director manager for the Idaho Transportation Department and our planning and scoping section. I'm responsible for reviewing, uh, permitting applications submitted, um, to ITD and provide agency comments for your proposed developments. ITD was made aware of the proposed application for the Marina expansion and provided, uh, comments on that and objected to the, uh, change in use, significant change in use that the Marina is proposing. And what we're gonna really address is, uh, I'm gonna cover some of the, um, issues that I noted in our, in my pre-hearing statement, just kind of go cover all that information. Uh, the proposed Marina is a significant change in use to its current operations. Um, and we would, uh, which is currently located around forty slips and proposed to go to two seventy. ITD's right of way on the Long Bridge is a hundred and fifty feet, so that's a point of clarification, is a hundred and fifty feet from the center line of the old head bridge. That easement was issued to, um, the Idaho Transportation Department by the State Board of Land Commissioners in January nineteen seventy nine under Idaho easement forty seven eight. Um, and so the total easement at that section on, is about, is three hundred feet wide. That is depicted in our exhibit, my TD number three.
And let me stop you right there. I had trouble getting that exhibit to load on my iPad for whatever reason. But can you clarify whether exhibit, the last page of exhibit eleven shows the correct line at the right of way because the dock is?
Yes, so, yeah, similar. Just, just to note it as in our narrative. As such, you know, we have looked at the littoral line, uh, overlapping with the ITD Long Bridge easement paralleling, uh, US ninety five. Department also would like to note, it appears that the last slip on the easternmost portion of Dock B is located adjacent to the right of way. And it would be our position that if any ship, boats were parked on that side, they would be located within the ITD right of way. Which, um, uh, ITD's respective IDAPA code thirty nine oh three four two, highway right of way encroachments on the state highway right of way, section eight oh one prohibitions, uh, prohibited uses, prohibits the use of, uh, highway right of way or any portion thereof for any of the following purposes, including subsection F, which is the placement of portable objects or signs, displays or other unapproved highway fixtures. Subsection G, any permanent, temporary or mobile structures manned or unmanned. So a point of clarification from the previous witness, the department would like to know how, you know, that, that that slip was not, we would not see boats parked on that last slip that approached in the highway. That'd be like a commercial operation within the state highway, which is appropriate use.
Well, let me, while we're on the topic, normally, sorry, I'm ready to finish your
No, no, please, please go.
Other than jumping back and forth. So Mr. Lane testified, and that's the boat slip that I pointed him to, that but the right of way, that no boats would be parked on the exterior of that slip, but to the interior, would that resolve ITD's concerns about the encroachment?
We can assure that that does not happen and we do not have to become an enforcement to, if you see boats out there, I, the department would like to be enforced.
Okay, please continue.
Thank you. Some of the, uh, IDL's counsel clarified some of our questions regarding lines of navigability. Um, we also noted that IDAPA twenty zero three zero four, section thirteen, general encroachment standards, the length of community docks or commercial navigation encroachments, docks, piers or other works may extend to a length that will provide access to deep water for sufficient draft or water graph. That's from how you use it. If the, uh, proposed Marina will extend docks out six hundred and thirty nine and the feet out into Lake of Pondure, um, that section notes that no structure may extend beyond the normal accepted line of navigability established use unless additional length is authorized by this permit or by the director. So uh, question to IDL council, will, um, this permit delineate that line of navigability? Or is that applicable? And it goes out this far?
We can recall Ms., Mr. Amer that had Mr. Luke asking that question.
Okay, I'm, I'm used to this format.
No, you're fine.
Used to just kind of mash it up. Uh, our section, uh, second thing I would like to discuss, and I think we've addressed it here with the latest exhibit, uh, LBM four. Uh, addresses the department's concern regarding encroachment standards and parking requirements. As noted in the original application, there was a discrepancy between, uh, the narrative and then the initial uh, parking plan. Exhibit LMB four addresses those meeting that uh, parking requirement for, uh, two parking spots for each slip, but it does not alleviate the department's concern over safety issues generated by the location of the approach to, uh, Lake Shore Drive and US ninety five. Um, as earlier noted, um, uh, ITD has a permitted fiber optic utility that runs along US ninety five. It's an internet cable, uh, owned and operated by Fat Bean Fiber, a North Idaho based internet provider. That cable runs along the, uh, west side of US ninety five there to Lake Shore Drive, proceeds down our right of way and then enters the lake adjacent to the property line and then again goes diagonally across, uh, Lake Fondre, um. Uh, and that, uh, cable provides essential services, um, all the way to Canada, including traffic for ITD's maintenance operations facilities in North Idaho. Uh, we would note that the applicant should coordinate with the provider to avoid any, um, inadvertent disruptions to service. Uh, in future relocation, I have notified him of, um, this proposed development and, um, that that could impact their alignment and may require relocation. Might be possible to uh, work around it during construction, but I advise them that they will engage with the contractors ending this, um, finding to see if that full relocation of that cable avoid any potential construction or future interference, uh, to occur at that location. I think, uh, Mr. Luke, that'll be it for my section.
Thank you, Rob. I'll just be, I'll turn it back to the hearing officer who wants to have questions or have other counsel.
Yeah, I would, I like for further explanation, so what I, I think you heard, what I think I already say, it's that is it the internet provider company has an easement with ITD or is this ITD's internet cables?
Um, for question, ITD has permitted that as a utility encroachment permit through the state highway right of way. And they have an easement with IDL for the marine cable that goes across the lake. That's separate. So they have an additional easement with IDL utility.
So an easement with IDL to go across the lake bed?
Once it leaves, ITD's right of way.
Okay.
It proceeds.
And it's similar to an easement, but you just call it a permit for a utility?
Yes, as within the state highway right.
Okay.
It is an encroachment and is permitted as such.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for that clarification. And so it sounds like the parking concerns have been alleviated and it's more the traffic safety concerns, which I think we'll get a little bit deeper into tomorrow when we have the onsite inspection and the visual to go with it. And then I have a question on assurances that no boats will be parked on the easement side of that last slip that butts right-of-way and what those assurances look like. I don't think that's an appropriate question to put you on the spot with. I would like you to confer with counsel that we may break before the proceedings conclude to figure out what that is, if Mr. Lane's testimony was sufficient or if he would like assurances above and beyond, such as. So Mr. Luke's floor is yours again.
Anything else you'd like to hear?
No. The statement by IDL counsel in the pre-hearing has helped clarify some of the department's concerns regarding the property rights standing between ITD's permanent easement with the lake or that transportation facility. It's important to note, US ninety-five is a principal archery. It runs the length of Idaho, five hundred and thirty-eight miles. And the Long Bridge over Fondre River and Lake is one of ITD's twelve strategic bridges. Any incidents that hinder traffic, there's over a two-hour detour for any traffic that travels along our system and if the highway is impacted or issues to the bridge can occur.
Thank you. We'll follow on, here, sorry, we'll follow on your question that you had there a little bit and get back with you. I don't know if you want to see if there's other questions that.
Mr. Regent, do you have any questions for this witness?
I agree. I do have some questions on the, on the how the day party may affect ITD's concern on traffic if that happens a bit, but that may be most of the points on our sites.
Yeah, I think it'll be easier to understand their concerns if we have sites on the visuals that ITD's, the traffic intersections that are specifically the problem vis-à-vis the location of the parking lot.
Mr. Blitzer, could you please clarify where the center line is located from which the ITD's easement is measured?
The right-of-way line is noted in the easement and in an exhibit, ITD one, or excuse me, ITD two, the original nineteen seventy-nine easement granted by the lands commissioners to the Idaho Transportation Department on the south end of the Long Bridge there. Depicted on that is the center line of the old, what we're calling our pedestrian bridge, the center line of that.
The center of the infrastructure today, not just the two-lane.
Not the two-lane operational highway.
That approach with this show me.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blitzer, I'm going to show you what is part of IDL exhibit number eleven. This is pages marked as IDL eleven dash zero zero eight, which shows a overlay of the proposed encroachment and also an approximation of where the center line, ITD's right-of-way is set. Looking at this exhibit, is that an accurate depiction of where the center line would be? Is that the old?
Yes.
That you're discussing?
Yes, that's an approximate delineation of that center line. And then a hundred and fifty-foot due to the west depicts that ITD right-of-way bound.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Regent, any other questions?
One question on the, the internet cable. You had testified that ITD had granted permission to have the utility within ITD's right-of-way area. If there is no physical encroachment within ITD's right-of-way area, does that alleviate ITD's concerns about impacts to the cable?
The department's not concerned about the impacts in the upland portion, but is concerned about that, just noting it, that that cable is there through permit to ITD's right-of-way as it then comes into, under the jurisdiction of IDL for the navigable lakes in and of such as, as an associated easement.
Mr. Regent?
Thank you. So just to be clear, the time we produced with the application that was updated, they have announced about it, it's eleven dash zero zero eight. From your review, that that correctly illustrates the location of the one hundred and fifty-feet width measured from the old pedestrian bridge.
Yes, well, the ITD received an updated exhibit from Mr. Melbreth on December fourth that depicted that.
And that was.
Approximate right-of-way down.
And that was the ITD. It's three that you referred.
Yes, sir.
And that's the same as IDL eleven dash zero zero.
Yes, sir.
And what a condition of the issue of the encroachment permit sought that the docks closest to the shoreline could not have mortgage on the outside finger for that satisfy the concerns that the, there'd be no mortgage within your right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
As it relates to the fiber optic, have you reviewed the encroachment permit issued by the Department of Lands for that fiber optic?
I just, it was my understanding they haven't. I don't have their permit. That's not our jurisdiction.
And do you recall whether or not you were given notice of that process and procedure when that was issued?
I knew of their path because they were perfectly permitted through ITD for that cable to that point.
But you couldn't confirm whether or not it's encroachment permit number L ninety-six dash dash two four six.
I could not, yes, sir.
And you're unaware where it permeates on the other side of transitions, on the other side of the lake, back to upland?
Um, towards downtown. I don't know where it lands there.
If I said more in field with that impression, that collection.
That could be it.
But you're not.
That's, that's out of our zone, so.
Out of the jurisdiction.
Out of the jurisdiction of Idaho Transportation.
All right. Now, on that topic, shifting to right-of-way, there are concerns with Highway ninety-five, which is ITD's jurisdiction, correct? And the intersection of Lake Shore Drive?
Yes, sir.
And the intersection portion that lies within the ITD right-of-way?
Yes.
And then the remainder or the rest of Lake Shore Drive is Bonner County jurisdiction?
Yes, sir.
And so any crosswalks, crossing of Lake Shore Drive, that would all be located on the county portion of the right-of-way?
That's to be determined. It is not depicted in any of the exhibits and that was some of our department's concerns noted in our pre-hearing statement.
So if there was some proposal to use ITD right-of-way for a crosswalk, that would have to go through a permitted process?
Yes.
And that'd be with ITD?
Yes.
And if there was not crosswalk or transitioning across Lake Shore on the county portion, that would go to Bonner County's?
Yes.
And would not be in ITD's jurisdiction?
It would not. More than likely, we would provide agency comments if we get that because you're adjacent.
And so the upland authority for that portion of Lake Shore Drive would be Bonner County.
Beyond ITD's right-of-way.
And Bonner County would be the one that would have the ability and place restrictions, limitations, or the conditions of that.
Yes.
No additional questions for this?
Okay, thank you. Nothing further? Thank you, Mr. Blitzer. Do you need to be excused?
Thank you.
If you would like to call Gary Vincent?
Please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony or right is truthful, true, and not to put the dirt?
Jerry, you are also an employee of the Idaho Transportation Department, is that correct? And what is your job title?
Service.
Thank you. How long have you been employed with ITD? And how long have you been in your present role? All right. Now, on behalf of ITD, you have looked into the Long Beach Marina expansion request and you were involved in submissions both to the Idaho Department of Lands as well as the hearing officer in this matter, is that correct? Similar to what I did with Rob, I'm going to turn it over to you now, let you share your testimony and insight on this. Thank you.
So I'm going to be just going over our concerns with the operation of US ninety-five impacts perceived to come from an increase of traffic volumes from the Marina's proposed parking increase. Considering the fact that the county standard requires the parking to be increased for the number of moors for the for the proposed expansion of the Marina, that will add additional traffic turning movements to the Lake Shore US ninety-five intersection and both ingress and ingress from that Lake Shore approach to ninety-five will be impacted by the increase in turning movements and traffic volume from the proposed expansion of the Marina. So currently, that intersection does have a history of having accidents. On average, it's about two per year at the intersection over the last, I believe, the five years. Research that was done for that would have been twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three. And there were eight intersection accidents there. Seven out of the eight of those accidents were turning movements onto or off of ninety-five from Lake Shore Drive. And any increase in, in traffic turning movements always is the potential for additional accidents. And so that would be our concern of the increase the parking lot being required by the increase to the expansion of the Marina, attracting more vehicles parking there. And the proposal shows the, the new south parking lot, which is on the south side of Lake Shore Drive, having the approach at approximately forty-five feet from US ninety-five, which is very substandard to the, the normal distance expected by both ITD and Bonner County, I believe the Bonner County standard is three hundred and thirty feet from the adjacent intersection like that. So very substandard. The issue that you have there is vehicles turning onto Lake Shore from whether it's southbound or northbound, wanting to enter that approach. If there's any traffic sitting at the Lake Shore ninety-five intersection, specifically wanting to turn left going northbound on US ninety-five, that traffic would be blocking the approach very consistently, preventing vehicles from turning into that parking lot. And standard traffic is going to stop and wait, trying to get a space to turn into the parking lot. We are expecting that to happen, especially during the summer months, the recreational season. Traffic volumes on ninety-five in the area increased significantly. The average ADT is around eighteen thousand at ninety-five at this area. And the summer traffic peak, if I remember correctly, is around twenty-four thousand. So it's about a thirty percent increase during the summertime, which is what we would expect. The Marina's increase in traffic to be their busy season. Absolutely the same recreational. So adding additional traffic and turning movements from these vehicles into that parking lot, that one, like I said, is, is substandard on its distance of the approach to that to US ninety-five.
It's the term ADT, what does that say?
Average annual daily traffic. And so that's actually calculated for the full year. So it's an average over the year for, per day. But like I'm saying, in the peak summertime, that increases due to that recreational traffic, which is expected.
And you said that's a third increase?
Yes, a lot of, a lot of.
Thanks.
That would just be our, you know, through normal development, I mean, this, this is a common thing. You know, new development happens, an increase in traffic volumes. Anytime there's an increase in traffic volumes, that is followed with an increase in traffic accidents. You know, so that, that's going to be our concern is to keeping a safe operation of the US ninety-five. And even without the accidents, that's going to cause also additional congestion. This is a US highway, as, as Rob had mentioned, you know, a critical route for ITD in the state of Idaho. Because of those traffic volumes, that traffic has to continue to move. The higher speed, the better, right? Because that's how you flush that many vehicles through. As traffic slows down, trying to make turning movements, you are increasing the number of crashes just for the sake that, that you're building up that congestion. That's just how it works. The concern, you know, from the proximity of that, the parking lot approach, both on the north and south side of, of Lake Shore Drive, is the lack of storage for vehicles while they're entering the parking lot. And the assumed number of, you know, vehicles, I believe what they said, the increase now to the parking stalls on the south parking lot was a hundred and fifty-six. I don't know off the top of my head the number of parking stalls on the north parking lot for the entrance into the Marina.
Jerry, what do you mean by say lack of storage? Just explain that a little bit.
So there were the vehicles turning onto Lake Shore Drive, that distance, that forty-five feet, that's your storage distance for vehicles to sit, waiting to turn into the parking lot. And so this is what I meant, when vehicles on Lake Shore Drive are sitting at, in the left turn bay, waiting to make their left onto ninety-five, those cars stack up and would be blocking the entrance into that parking, parking lot there. So depending on the number of vehicles turning into, onto Lake Shore Drive, whether they're going to the parking lot or not, you know, they're going to start backing up and you have such a short distance that the number of turning movements would likely back traffic into US ninety-five.
Thank you.
Okay. Other issues, obviously not pertaining to, you know, the parking lot distance, but vehicles leaving Lake Shore Drive, like I said, trying to make that left-hand turn because of the traffic volumes on ninety-five, waiting for a safe gap to make that left turn is what causes them to sit at that intersection and build up a traffic queue, waiting to make that left turn. And a lot of that traffic will turn right. ITD has recently built a turnaround to make, to make a safer traffic movement from Lake Shore to ninety-five, just south of the Lake Shore ninety-five intersection. So traffic would now be, they can turn left, or turn right, head down to the turnaround, be in a center turn lane, turn left across northbound ninety-five, make the turnaround, and now enter ninety-five with a right-hand turn, which is much safer. We do not and cannot require vehicles to do that. We signed it, you know, so they would cope with that traffic movement, but they're going to make the choices that they make. And they, we still have a significant number of people trying to make that left-hand turn and taking risky, making risky decisions and pulling into high-speed, high-volume traffic. making risky decisions and pulling into high-speed, high-volume traffic. So they also end up, instead of even going down to our turnaround, they've cut into the the left turn bay to turn into Greenwood Drive and use that as a turnaround, which is not certainly a preferred option either. But it's what's happening. And so and any increase in traffic volume specifically so close to that intersection will just exacerbate existing issues. So that that's our concern with that. And the pedestrian facility issue that was already spoken about. Considering the Marina's on the north side of Lake Shore Drive and the new parking lot is on the south side with the majority of the of the parking stalls of Lake Shore Drive. People will have to park, be crossing on foot Lake Shore Drive to get to the Marina, to get to their boat. That's a good thing, except for there is not currently any adequate pedestrian facilities to do that. Normally, when a development is being proposed for that, that's like Mr. Bechler testified that we would get a request from the county from that development permit for comment. And at that point, we would be making the comment that we think some type of, you know, engineered pedestrian facility needs to be installed there to create a safer crossing of Lake Shore Drive between those two parking lots, which certainly can be done. It was also brought up that where would that pedestrian facility be within ITD right-of-way or within Bonner County right-of-way? It it could be either. It's usually would be closer to the intersection, so would probably be on ITD right-of-way. But you could do what's called more of a mid-block crossing. So it could be further back on the the Bonner County right-of-way of Lake Shore Drive. It just has to be designed in a single. So that that certainly can be accommodated. But usually, like I said, when a development like that comes in, they're putting in new facilities that's going to create additional traffic volumes. That is what ITD would probably comment back to the county as a requirement that we would like to see put on the development to pay for and have this stuff. Yeah. I'm going to leave the emergency response discussion to our foreman, who will be testifying next. So I did also want to just bring to the attention of all parties the future planned expansion of US 95. From, we currently have a project in development to do preliminary design and to reevaluate the existing approved environmental impact statement for ninety-five in this area and what that will do is we'll be taking US 95 from a principal arterial with direct access to the highway to a controlled, limited access highway where you would only access the highway from interchanges through frontage roads. So that future project will address and fix these concerns that I'm describing that we're having at the the Lake Shore 95 intersection. That's why the project is is currently being engineered and but that does, you know, we do not have construction funding identified of when we would have that done. So yes, we're in the process of developing the a fix to the highway here that would address these concerns, but I cannot state when the construction of that future project will happen. So I believe it is part of our, one of our exhibits showing the anticipated future design, which will have a frontage road on the north side or that would be the west side, I apologize, of US 95 connecting from Lake Shore, heading south, which would take all that traffic from Lake Shore Drive down to the proposed interchange at Brisboise Road. So it would be a significant change. That frontage road, these these expand, the expansion of ninety-five and the frontage road construction will have significant impact, you know, on this area. So I'm just pointing that out, but the the main thing I was trying to get across is there is a current plan in action to address the existing conditions of ninety-five in this area to make these improvements.
Mr. Richards, do you have any?
You talked about some of the proposed plans ITD may implement in the future, some of the concerns that it does. Do you know whether those proposed plans have any impacts to the proposed parking lot as it's been disclosed since?
I would expect. It it would be the the frontage road with the expansion of ninety-five and the the expansion of the frontage road there would impact the parking lot by basically, we we would have to acquire right-of-way there to build that frontage.
So what you said, you're thinking that that project may approach on where proposed parking lot?
Yes. I believe it will.
Given the the scope of the parking, we've got the new exhibit that sets the number of other business spaces satisfying what's required and you have to consider the traffic impacts that that may result. Is there a I don't have an answer off the top of my head, this is fine, but is there an acceptable number where ITD does not have concerns on increased parking spaces?
On the number of increased?
I guess would there be an acceptable number of spaces here to ITW concerns?
Um, I I I would have to, what normally we would ask for, like I said earlier, when the county would have their request for a development permit for this parking lot, they would ask for comment from ITD. At that point, based on the number of stalls, we would ask for a traffic impact study to be created by the applicant. So we would then know the projected number of turning movements. That would have to be compared to the existing traffic and yes, there probably would be a number that we would say, you know, I'm I'm just saying a number. If it's twenty-five, we could say that's probably not going to be an increase to the existing current traffic that would be significant, but whatever, a hundred and fifty, yes, that would. Does that help?
Yeah, no, that's helpful. And you had mentioned that, you know, ITD usually would participate in a counting process. Is your understanding that, yeah, okay, would have to go through accounting permitting process to construct this parking lot as opposed?
Yes, that is my understanding.
And do you expect that ITD would be involved in provide comments in that process?
In in the in the permit process, yes. Just because it's an adjacent property to US 95 that will be adding traffic to the intersection of Lake Shore and US 95.
Mr. Penny?
Thank you. So just to be clear, you anticipate another bite at the apples when Bonner County deals with the right-of-way and parking lot. And you understand that Bonner County is the authority of jurisdiction, not the Department of Lakes?
Correct.
And just to make sure the record is clear. For those who live here, we know about it, but we have a lot of people from out of town. So currently, there is an improvement that provides for Lake Shore Drive traffic and is tries to entice them to, but to turn to the right and go down to the installed turnaround location that's currently in existence.
Yes, it is.
And the plans underway for these future frontage roads and such, those are still in the planning phase, is that correct?
They're preliminary design phase.
And there have been previous rounds of preliminary designs even compared to where we have now.
Correct.
And those designs could change even differently in the future.
Correct.
And so it is possible you wouldn't have to necessarily take any additional right-of-way at this location if the frontage road wasn't immediately adjacent to the right-of-way, but might come in from the backside of this property or from some other location further down Lake Shore.
There's a potential for that, but that's very unlikely. What we're taking this this development of the future project to is through preliminary design to get a reevaluation of the current approved environmental impact statement for US 95 in this area. That reevaluation requires us to get to that point in the process. So we're showing what the impacts would be. So with environmental clearance, we would then move to final design, which is not going to make significant changes to the alignment or you know, the operation of it. So the frontage roads would be there at that phase. No, I do not believe you would see a change in location of that frontage road to save a a further distance back.
So is there your testimony that you're to the point that there aren't any changes or there could potentially still be?
There still could potentially be changes.
And would you agree that ITD does not have any authority over the use of the applicant's property as a parking lot or otherwise at this point in time?
Yes, I do.
And isn't one of ITD's functions or charges or missions, however we want to describe it, to take into account not only existing traffic, but anticipated growth or foreseeable growth in his plans? And that's part of this process that's ongoing right now.
Correct.
No other questions?
I think you would like to call Amy Miller?
Thanks for your first name. I'll make sure I get it right for any order too. Please write it right and do swear affirm that the testimony you're about providers truth, double truth, nothing but the truth.
Jamie, you're employed by the Idaho Transportation Department, is that correct? How long have you been an employee?
Fifteen years.
And what is your job title? And what area is are you forming in?
Pretty slight.
Okay. How long have you been in that role? All right. And you have some testimony about incident response to US 95 and Lake Shore Drive, is that correct? I'm going to turn that over to you and let you share that with us. Thank you.
First of all, I'm out there tomorrow. I do have some concerns about the placement of approaches and from experience that we are going to see increased traffic with with both trailer traffic, which is good is going to create a problem backing traffic up out into ninety-five. So with that being said, with the traffic coming off of Lake Shore Drive and the amount of time I I have went out and sat and watched the queues and traffic and see what they're doing on coming off Lake Shore Drive. Since that new project has been built on our turnaround. And yesterday, I actually went out there for an hour and counted traffic and what they were doing. And we had forty-eight cars coming off of Lake Shore Drive. Out of the forty-eight cars in that hour, twenty-nine of them turned and left and to go north and watching them pace themselves to try to get out into traffic. You know, they're they're waiting for a safe time, what they feel is a safe time to get out there. So that intersection is backing up with with vehicles as they're waiting to get out and they're plugging the hole to turn into to where the traffic would go into that turnout. Out of out of the forty-eight, nineteen of them went north or south, excuse me. And out of the nineteen that went south, only three of them used the turnaround. The rest were continuing on south. So we're still seeing, even though that we have that facility there, that the majority of the people are not using it. They're actually taking the risk of going north. And so what we see, I kind of want to take you through kind of what we see when we do have accidents in Lake Shore Drive. The accidents are normally not mainline accidents where traffic is going north and south. It's normally vehicles either turning onto Lake Shore Drive or turning, coming out of Lake Shore Drive and turning to go north. And when those accidents happen, they're they're high-speed accidents. And we see that normally the highway gets shut down because the accident scattered throughout the whole intersection there. And so we are called to come and help do traffic control and take control of the of the scene. And so what my job is, is I will be contacted by STAC either my guys are out the field or they're at home. We we're we're twenty-four seven. So I'll call the people. We respond within thirty and forty minutes. We get our stuff. We get out on the accident. What we see more times than not is on the long bridge when we have accidents there that as the traffic's coming to a stop for the accident, we have, we we get a lot of secondary accidents prior or after the accident where people aren't paying attention and there were any other cars. And normally what happens is that those are normally high-speed accidents into stop cars, which drive that car into another car. And then that accident ends up blocking the highway or the long bridge. So that hinders us from being able to even get on site a lot of times. So now we're we're an hour, close to an hour into getting to get on scene and we're not able to get there. So at that point, I am required to try to get somebody on scene. So I'll call the Alpham crew and they have to go through the whole same process to get their people pulled in and get them up there. So they have a better chance of getting on scene than we do because of the how narrow the bridges. And if we and if and if we can get on scene, normally what we'll do is we'll get on scene. If if we can, my job is to get traffic moving as fast as we can. So we'll assess the scene, make sure it's safe, and then we get traffic moving in in one direction. That's our goal, as fast as we possibly can. If it's a fatality, then we normally can't move traffic at all in in those cases. And so what ends up happening is traffic, we're four or five hours usually in a serious accident on by the time we clear traffic because traffic will back up all the way on the ramps going into sandpoint. It it'll back all the way through Ponderay and back there. We go from a two-lane to four-lane, so they're backed up. And once we move traffic and get traffic moving, we don't get trapped. It takes at least an hour, two hours sometimes to get traffic up to speed, heading southbound because everybody wants to look and see what happened as they're going and they're not getting up to speed. Plus, you have all the vehicles merging in. And there's a lot of times, so we stay on scene for that. There's a lot of times during that period of time that we'll have additional accidents that will happen as we're getting traffic moving, not serious slow-moving accidents. So that even slows the traffic down more. So my concern is is that any accident on Lake Shore Drive, if we have one accident, that's one too many. But I'm just concerned with the amount of additional traffic that we're going to see on that and the fact that the people we're going to see on that and the fact that the people aren't using the the facility that was built for them. They're still taking the risk of um going north off of Lake Shore Drive that we're going to see with the increase in people, that we could see increase um accidents there.
I have no further questions.
No questions, Flan.
Uh I don't know if you were able to hear, but there is no boat ramp there, so there is no anticipated boat trailers. I doubt that changes your opinion, but does that change your opinion?
Um it does not. Um my my experience is that when boats are put in originally, um they're launched, there's there's no long tram there, so they're launched from another facility. And if it's one um marine repair place or whatever, in most cases, they'll use that same, they'll launch the boat, they'll use that same vehicle to one person will drive the boat over, and they'll use that same vehicle with the trailer, one of them to go retrieve that person after they put the boat in origin. So I expect that we'll see a lot of that.
Right. So beginning of season, placing boats, you have to space trailers, end of season, retrieving boats. But the day-to-day, Fourth of July, at the summer, we wouldn't anticipate more changes. I was going to ask if there's some way to put some permanent traffic accident at Longshore, at Lake Shore, have a three-plan get-around. That's about, to be honest, it's really good. So I I, yeah.
And and one thing I did forget to mention is that, like they said it, if we have a two-hour event, then at that point, we're we're required to get the roads closed for two hours to to um detour and for us to detour traffic. Um I am required to keep traffic on our systems. So I'm detouring traffic to Old Town, to Forty-One and around that way. And a lot of the people, especially during tour seasons, they don't know all the shortcuts from pre-strepper at those places. So it's, and then the other thing that we have is, you know, the accident, if we have an accident, the other emergencies don't stop. And if the long bridge is blocked, we have no way to get the emergency vehicles through there for other emergencies that are going. So that's a concern too.
No additional questions?
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
No further questions, right, Jamie?
Okay, um I'm going to take a quick break off the record to confer with council. Um let people stretch their legs, so we'll be here in about five minutes. Let's say five forty. Very precise, so six minutes.
All right, it is five forty on the dot, so we'll get started here again. Um we had initially uh initially contemplated closing briefing in these proceedings, but I think some of the issues were resolved through witness testimony. Um that may not require that I've asked all three parties, counsel, to um discuss with their clients and to provide an answer um tomorrow at the onsite inspection of whether closing briefing is still desired. If not, record will close tomorrow at five o'clock when public comment closes, thus escalating just the timeline by that two weeks as to the thirty-day period for the final order and the period of time for my recommended order to be issued. Um I will now turn it back over to I have a message saying no audio from six thirty-six. Can you hear us now again, Tyler? Yes, okay. Yeah, sorry, I muted you guys while we, the recording was paused, so you didn't hear a whole bunch of background chatter. Um. So with that, I will turn it back over to the council to, for each of the parties, to see if there's any other presentation of evidence or closings they want to make. Um just given the fact that there's still an option for um written closings, I'm going to ask that we not do verbal closings because either your pre-hearing said it or your closing written statements can say it, okay? So, Mr. Richards, anything else?
Uh I may recall my game, there was one question on the line that I didn't go, I didn't just.
Being track of my checklist, that's that's correct. Mr. Amer. Well, and a reminder, you're still under oath.
Yes.
Um. Mr. Bechler had a question about the line of navigability. Um I'll either let Mr. Luke ask that question on his behalf, or Mr. Luke can defer to his client for the clarification.
Yeah, I'll just uh read this paragraph here, and then there the the question is there at the end. Uh says the proposed marina expansion will extend docks and piers outs out to six hundred and thirty-nine feet into Lake Ponderay. No structure may extend beyond the normal accepted line of navigability established through use unless additional length is authorized by permit or order of the director. And here's the question that was raised. Has a line of navigability been established for this portion of Lake Ponderay or will be established as part of the permitting process?
Repeat that question more time, please.
As a line of navigability been established for this portion of Lake Ponderay or will be established as part of the permitting process?
Okay. So the first part of that question, has a line of navigability been established? Yes. The line of navigability has been established by the adjacent docks to the west, single-family docks to the west. Um for our, for line of navigability, as IDAPA says, as the hearing statement says, um commercial marinas and community docks can extend beyond line of navigability if approved by the by the director. Uh further, our procedures state that when processing applications for commercial marinas and community docks, the line of navigability is typically not considered as these facilities may extend beyond the line of navigability. So I think the answer to the second part of the question is if this were approved, it would extend beyond the line of navigability, but this new marina would not be setting a new line of navigability, meaning then an adjacent dock to the west, a single-family dock to the west, would not be allowed to go out six hundred and thirty-nine feet if they wanted to. Um the the line of navigability is more applicable for single-family and two-family encroachments. So again, a line of navigability has been set in this area by the other permitted encroachments, including to some extent the existing marina. But per our procedures, community docks and commercial facilities can extend beyond the line of navigability, and they're extending beyond, they're not setting it. And so this wouldn't set out a precedent for another single-family dock um to the west.
Richard, do you have any? Does that help you with? All right.
Procedure, the procedure.
Correct, I pulled it right off of the procedures uh. Correct. Section twenty-five.
All right, that'll work for me then. Thank you.
I'm not sure. I don't think, I think we usually just reference uh statute and rules in our provisions statement.
Mr. Finney, does that raise any further questions for you?
Just to make it clear in the record, the procedures man is consistent with the statutes and that allow for commercial areas to extend beyond that.
Correct.
It's not the authority, it's just recitation of what the authority does.
For further clarifies for us on our staff how to handle.
Mr. Richards? Mr. Luke? Okay, thank you, Mr. Amer, for your third reading.
Better.
All right, Mr. Richards, anything further from here today?
Nothing further tomorrow.
Okay. Mr. Luke?
I'm done.
Yep, Mr. Finney?
On the off chance we don't make a written closing, we just summarily say that reflects that the requirements have been met and the issues have been met as proper.
Okay. Um, all right, with that, um just in case I forget to say, tomorrow, anyone that testified here today and was put under oath, you will remain under oath for any purposes of explaining the project and the parking the encroachment areas at the office, offsite, onsite inspection. All right, with that, we're in recess. Thank you.